Good morning. Welcome, everyone. I'm John Colmell. And with me, as is customary, are my fellow trustees McKibben, Balboni, Trainer and Nakandry. And in addition to Gil and selected members of his esteemed leadership group, trustee Pacente is joining us via video. Trustee Kress has been excused. So as always, the meeting's been duly noticed as required by open meetings law. And some pleased to call this joint meeting of the Power Authority and the Canal Board to order. We've all seen our agenda for today. If anyone has any amendments thereto, I'm happy to take them now. Otherwise, it asks for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Move second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. As is customary, we're going to start this meeting in executive session for a period of time. Accordingly, I'd ask for a motion to conduct that session to discuss the financial credit history of a particular corporation pursuant to Section 105-F of the Public Officers' Law. Dennis has so moved the second. Judge, thank you very much. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We will convene and be back at you in a bit. Thank you very much. Welcome back, everyone. Appreciate your patience. Can I start by having a motion to resume the meeting in open session, please? Opened, I mean opened and seconded. Received, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Remind everyone that, as always, no votes were taken during the executive session. As we kick things off, I want to ensure anyone doesn't have any updates to any of the conflicts or any of the actions that are being approved or taken today. If I see none, terrific. We can then move to consent agenda. As always, a good amount of material to review and anticipate there. So hopefully, everyone's had a chance to do that. And the promise that you have, and unless there's any other questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mike, thanks very much. Second. Dennis, thank you. Any questions on any materials in the consent agenda? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. The focus of today's discussion is to build on the strategic dialogue that has been had over the past couple of years and the past six months in particular. So Gil and Bob are going to steer us through that. And Mr. CEO, you ready to kick us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, trustees, staff and members of the public. Today, we are going to have a much different meeting than we usually do. It will be focused entirely on our strategy and on the central question of how NIPA can make a bigger, in fact, a much, much bigger impact on state energy policy to produce better outcomes for the people of the state of New York. In order to do that, trustees, you have asked us to look at what needs to be done. And this really started last December when you approved our 2018 budget and our four-year financial plan, to ask us on what needs to be done and creatively look at how NIPA can use its capability and resources to achieve greater success and build on our current strategic plan. We have been reviewing that process as we have been building our plans that we will present today. Hold on. Let me do the clicker here. Can you just, all right, hold on. There you go. Our NIPA 2020 plan was...
It's not up on the screen.
Oh, it's not up on the screen. Well, for the members of the public, we're just adjusting our slides.
You want to just talk a little bit while we're waiting for the...
Yes. So while we're waiting for the slide, just want to mention that this, our plan was launched in 2014. It's the same year that the state energy plan was launched, and it had three main goals through 2030. Our plan had an initial horizon for action through, as I've mentioned, 2020, focusing on customer service and infrastructure modernization while building our internal capabilities for future success. It was then refreshed in 2017 to account for new technologies and market changes, introducing a vision and a plan for NIPA to become the first end-to-end digital utility, perhaps in, not only in the United States, but in the world. And this is really to keep us to become a very efficient and effective organization in delivering the best products and services to our customers. And in January this year, Governor Cuomo in his State of the State message set three ambitious new targets designed to move the state well along towards the goals he had already set for renewables and greenhouse gas reduction, namely, a target of 2.4 gigawatts of offshore wind by 2030, 1,500 megawatt of energy storage by 2025, and greatly increased energy efficiency targets, including the issuance of Executive Order 166 that requires state agencies and authorities to lead the way in accomplishing or exceeding these energy efficiency mandates. The 2017 strategic refresh included four key promises that NIPA made to our customers and the people of our state. Number one, be the market leader for energy efficiency and renewable energy services. Two, best to provide the best deal for electricity supply management for our supply customers. Three, leader in energy storage and electric vehicle infrastructure and services. Four, largest market share of new transmission and large-scale renewable projects. Today, we are delivering on those promises with the first of several bold actions that will keep New York in its place as a national leader in energy and environmental policy while helping achieve the state's goals. And we intend to do that while using our capital, together with private capital from private sector partners, to multiply the impact we can have. We are taking this bold action in two broad ways, building on our existing strategic plan, as well as finding new areas that go beyond our existing strategies and projects that we have deployed to date. And that will be the focus today, which is this green circle that Bob Lurie, our CFO and head of strategy, will make that presentation. Now, these new areas by nature require us to get more comfortable with uncertainty, to be more patient with our returns. But that has always been NIPA's role since the beginning of its history, to do what others can't or won't do for the benefit of the state, even as we invite private sector partners to be with us and help create conditions for their future investment. We know that these long-term investments that we will make will result in disproportionate benefits for all New Yorkers in the future, not very dissimilar to the investments we have made in the 50s and 60s in building our hydroelectric power projects, and since then, a third of the high-voltage power transmission grid in the state of New York. Now, I will turn it over to Bob, who will focus the rest of this presentation on the areas of potential investment. Bob?
Before Bob comes up, let's just maybe clarify that this is the culmination of extended effort, in particular, over the last six months, you, the team, we as a board, to get us to this point where we're now able to talk in a very excited, enthusiastic and frankly proud way about the opportunity to really boldly step out and step up.
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, when you and the board challenged us last December to really lean in and be a leader in this sector in helping to transform the utility sector, especially here in our state, we have been working diligently of various teams here at the Power Authority. We've been engaged in briefing you individually and in small groups for the past six months. We have had some updates in our previous board meetings prior to this board meeting today. And this is really now the culmination in giving you the three focused areas that we have landed on, plus to make a recommendation to the board for the first initiative under one of those three themes.
You guys have invested hundreds of hours as an organization...
Absolutely.
...in the last six months to develop this and put yourselves and all of us in a position to really do some exciting breakout moves that will really start to move the needle on what otherwise I think some have looked at as rather daunting, if not even skeptical, some skepticism as our ability to achieve as a state and really make the kind of progress that's expected.
Absolutely. I'd like to thank Bob and his team and many of the members of the various business units here at NIPA. This has been a cross-functional effort, working hard, putting all the necessary analytical underpinning of our recommendations to make sure that we are making as fact-based a set of decisions as we can while taking some measurable risks as we enter this new set of businesses.
Okay. Bob? Thanks, Gil.
Thank you, Gil. Hopefully, the presentation will stay up, and you won't see my tap dancing skills, which aren't very good. So Gil referred to the fact that Governor Cuomo has been consistent in establishing some very ambitious targets in the environmental area and the energy policy area. These two targets are ones that we really focused on in developing our plan. The first being the goal of achieving 50% of generation of electricity in the state from renewable energy sources by 2030, and the second being a 40% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from 1990 levels. These are ambitious targets. We've made significant progress in New York State towards these goals, but we have a lot more work to do. And that's really what our plan is focused on, is making continued progress towards those goals. Now, if we look at what the greenhouse gas emissions are as recently as 2014 across the various segments of the economy and compare that to the goal of 2030 of what needs to be done, there still needs to be about a 33% reduction to reach that target. And we've made a good bit of progress in some of these areas, certainly in electric power generation. Our transition to renewable energy is well underway. There's certainly a lot more work to do, and we need to continue that work. Our plan certainly focuses on that area. But if you look at this breakout, clearly, the thing that jumps out at us is transportation is by far the biggest segment of emissions in the economy. Residential also, this is largely space heating and water heating for residential use, is also a significant sector, and then commercial and industrial. But in terms of the kind of the next mountains decline, you can kind of see from here that in addition to continuing the work in generation, transportation will really need to be attacked to make significant progress towards that goal. So what we looked at is how do we best work to achieve some of these critical targets that the governor has set out? And what we did was we went back and started with a very broad scan of ideas. We talked to experts inside and outside of the authority. We looked at what other jurisdictions are doing, whether it's Europe or Asia or other states like California, Massachusetts, Illinois, that have been along with New York leaders in energy policy. And, you know, we looked at what has worked and what hasn't worked. We screened those ideas based on some fairly robust criteria that I'll show to you in a minute. And then we refined those ideas to come up with a handful that we thought would really be able to move the needle towards the targets and would be worthy and appropriate for NIPA to focus on, given our core skills and responsibilities as set out in our legislative mandate. So the criteria that we used, some of them, most of them are here. So let me just walk through those. The first was, can we have a meaningful impact on the state energy goals? The goals that were set out that are in the state energy plan, such as greenhouse gas reduction, but also the overall goals of the governor's Reforming the Energy Vision Initiative, which really focus on market solutions to a lot of these evolving needs in the state energy system. And how can we induce private sector investment? Because when, at the end of the day, the private sector and the private capital markets can bring a lot more capital to bear on these problems than the public sector can. And in many ways, they can be more effective. So how do we use public sector funds to induce that? Secondly, how do we do all that and achieve those goals while also making sure that electricity remains affordable and reliable? This is certainly something that NIPA has always focused on, but we feel that one of the roles that we can play is figuring out how we can achieve these goals while at the same time making electricity affordable and reliable. We want to make sure that whatever ideas that we actually execute on complements what we do well and complements what our statutory mandate is and our historical skill set. So we looked at our existing strategy. How can we build on that? And how can we make sure that we deliver additional economic development to the state? Because that's really why NIPA was formed. So we looked at the ability to create jobs and economic growth out of these initiatives. And then lastly, you know, we wanted to make sure that we combined whatever we do with the ability to bring in private sector partners. So what are the, what's the ability that these initiatives have to do that and try to attract private investment in some sort of partnership? So these were the primary criteria we applied. And we looked at a wide range of ideas. This is a sample, a small sample of some of the ideas that we looked at, and it was really across the entire energy value chain. So we also looked at both the supply side of the energy market and the demand side of the energy market and where we might impact both. We looked at adjacent markets, meaning areas that maybe are not within our historical mandate but are just outside of it or might stretch it, and would it be appropriate for us to try to do something in those areas if that would be more impactful? So in looking, looking across this gamut, we selected three that we believe are the most impactful and that meet the criteria that I just described. But if any of those, you know, need to be adjusted based on market response or on any changes that occur in the regulatory environment or changing business needs as things evolve, technology changes, we have the opportunity to go back to this list and others and bring those more to the fore. But we believe we've selected three that by far make the most sense in the initial stage. So we identified these three areas as having the most promise for investment. And the first one is clean generation. So we talked about the need to get 50% of the state's power from renewable generation by 2030. That's the state's target, and we want to do that affordably and reliably and efficiently. The governor has additionally set out a target of 2.4 gigawatts of renewable power coming from offshore wind. It's certainly an aggressive target. We don't really have much of any offshore wind today. There are several states in the U.S. looking at how to do that. Europe has made a big play in offshore wind, so we know it can be done. And we know that there's work to do to try to make that happen. So clean generation is an area where we've focused some attention. I'll go into each of these in a minute. The second area is focusing on what has to happen to make sure that when we do clean generation and renewables, both large-scale and distributed at, for example, on rooftops at customer facilities, how do we make sure that that intermittent supply of renewables is reliable when it's integrated into the entire system? And there are various tools that we can use to make sure that we're supplying power when it's needed, not just when the sun shines and the wind blows. And how do we make sure that we use power on the demand side when that power is cheapest and available? So obviously, when, you know, when the wind is blowing and the wind plants are generating power, it's essentially free at that moment. And we want to make sure that we're using power when it's both carbon-free and least expensive. And then the third area that we're recommending that we focus on, and this is probably the most advanced of the ideas, is electric vehicles and trying to accelerate the adoption of electric vehicles in the marketplace. As I mentioned, transportation is a huge emitter of greenhouse gases today, and we feel that if we're going to make any meaningful reduction in that, we really have to focus on the transportation sector. This is something NIPA has already been working on at smaller scale. We really want to ramp that up and accelerate the state's progress towards reducing greenhouse gas reductions by electrifying the transportation sector. So going through each one of those in turn, first on clean generation, you know, as I think the public generally knows, certainly all of you know, that we have been soliciting renewable energy from large-scale renewable projects. NYSERTA has done several solicitations for renewable energy for distribution throughout the state. And we've made some progress in achieving procurement of renewables. The governor has, in addition, said that we want to get 2.4 gigawatts of offshore wind by 2030. And if we look at this graph in 2017, this shows the total amount of electricity in terawatt-hours that we receive from various sources today. So this, if we look at, this is just the renewables, the clean energy component of our generation mix. Most of it today is in hydro, but another portion in the blue bar here is non-hydro renewables, and there are six terawatt-hours coming from that. In order to achieve the 2030 goal, we need to take that six terawatt-hours, and we need to increase it to 29. So a tremendous increase of about five times in the total amount of renewable energy. And in order to achieve that, there's going to have to be a big increase in onshore renewables, but also in offshore wind to achieve that target. So, you know, what NIPA wants to do is use its resources in a variety of ways to try to attack that problem and cut into that gap and make sure that we achieve that target as much as we can. And both onshore and offshore wind, this is also a tremendous economic development opportunity. The onshore renewable investment that the state is making through NYSERTA and through NIPA and that essentially through customer purchases of renewables, the state believes can attract about $1.5 billion in private investment and create over 1,000 jobs just in the onshore component of renewable energy. In terms of offshore, that could even be a bigger job creator because in order for this industry to take root here in New York and in the Northeast, there's going to need to be port infrastructure developed to build and maintain these systems. There's going to have to be a supply chain developed in terms of manufacturing facilities for parts and for the assembly of these projects and all of the supporting infrastructure. And there's going to need to be transmission investment made, all of which creates jobs. But the opportunity here is to capitalize on that and establish New York State as a leader in offshore wind. In terms of NIPA's role in that, we're looking at a variety of ways that we might help. We are already soliciting power from onshore renewables on behalf of our customers, and we're hoping to find, and we believe we have found, some innovative ways to help finance those projects, to drive down the cost for our customers. In addition, we're continuing to build the transmission necessary to bring low-cost renewables from upstate to downstate and to bring that power around the state efficiently. As far as offshore wind, an area that we think has some promise for NIPA, given our skill set and our resources, is to look at how we can effectively and efficiently interconnect all of the offshore wind projects to the existing power grid and do that in the most efficient way and low-cost way. So one way to connect those projects, for example, is to simply run a transmission lead from the project directly to the shore and interconnect it with the transmission system. Another way to do that might be to interconnect all the projects in a more of a network fashion. And that might, in the long run, have a lower cost associated with the full-scale build-out of offshore wind. So we would like to first study whether that makes sense and whether that might drive costs down. We also want to work with developers, both on that and other ways that we might partner with them to reduce costs and do that in a way that produces returns and lower costs for customers. And then also see if there's ways that we can help maximize this local economic development impact from the job creation. Moving on to flexibility. So as I said earlier, you know, as we increase the amount of renewables on the state grid, there's going to be a need to make sure that we balance those intermittent sources of energy with demand. And there are various tools that we have in the toolkit to do that. One is storage. So energy storage in the form of batteries, but also our, for example, our pumped hydro storage facilities can be used to provide flexibility in the grid to store the electricity when it's created, perhaps from a solar or from wind, and be able to use it when demand is the highest, at peak periods. So storage is a flexibility solution that can keep the grid reliable as we increase these various renewable sources. Another way to attack this problem is through looking at the demand side. And we can also look at how we can increase demand flexibility as well. Looking first at storage, storage is, there's a storage target that Gil mentioned, about 1,500 megawatts of storage by 2025. And the state established that target, understanding how critical storage is going to be to implementing renewable energy at scale and driving down the amount of greenhouse gas emissions in the electric system. Our current storage deployments are just beginning, so we have a lot to do in this area. The market, private investors and technology providers and developers are very anxious to get involved in this and to do a lot of that implementation. But the problem is that that market is still very early in development, and the rules around how to get compensated for the flexibility services that storage can provide, either to customers or to the grid, are not fully developed. So the State Public Service Commission and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission have all begun proceedings on that subject. In the meantime, there's some uncertainty in the market about how that's going to play out. And that is limiting the degree to which those storage facilities are being adopted. So what can NIPA do in this area in the meantime? A couple of things that we think we can do. One is, we think that we can deploy storage projects across our customer base and across our assets on the bulk transmission system to show how storage can provide valuable services, flexibility services, to the grid. And that can in turn inform the regulatory process that can determine how best to compensate for the value of those services. We also think we can show how We also think we can show how the technology will work, and we can show business models that perhaps the private sector can use as it begins to invest in that area and begin to show customers what value storage can provide for them. And as we do that, we think there's an opportunity to capture data about customer usage, not just of storage, but in general, how they can use storage to manage their load and increase the value of services that these customers get. We can then share that data across the private sector market and with regulatory agencies to help them reduce the uncertainty of how those business models might work in the future. Similarly, for demand response, we think we can really focus on how to use data to show customers how they can move their load around in a flexible way, move their demand around, so that to the extent that they have some flexibility to use power at different times, maybe with different pricing incentives, that they can use power when it is both available and cheapest on the grid and save themselves money as a result, while also limiting the degree to which there's a strain on the system at peak times. So we think that there's a lot to do here, and we will come back to you with a full plan at a future meeting about how we believe we can attack this problem. So moving on to transportation. This is an area where we think New York State has a tremendous opportunity to be a national leader, and in fact, the national leader in reducing greenhouse gases from the transportation sector. And we can do that by looking at accelerating the adoption of electric vehicles. We already have what's called a zero-emission vehicle target, a ZEV target, of 850,000 plug-in electric vehicles by 2025. Currently, we have very few electric vehicles relatively on the road. It's in the tens of thousands. So we have a long way to go to reach this target as well. And then we believe, in addition to that, by 2030, we're going to need to have another 2 million electric vehicles on the road to hit the GHG reduction target of 40% by 2030. So the opportunity there is to say, how can we get 3 million electric vehicles on the road to hit that target and, as a result, reduce CO2 emissions in the state, an amount equivalent to eliminating six coal power plants in the state of New York? We don't have that many coal power plants, but that's the equivalent. And we think that not only would the state benefit from environmental emission reductions, but there would also be economic benefits in terms of lower lifecycle costs to the owners of those vehicles, and also potentially cost reduction to utility customers, because we think we can shift a lot of this use off-peak and therefore improve the overall efficiency of the electric grid while at the same time increasing overall load. So if we look at what's happened to date, this is a real, it's an opportunity but a challenge, because if we look back to 1990, the emissions from the transportation sector have actually increased over time from 29% to 41% of the total, even as the overall emissions have declined. And there's been a much more rapid decline here in the amount from the electricity sector. So progress there, but this is really the next big nut to crack. I mentioned the zero-emission vehicle target. If we look at how many registered electric vehicles we might need to have under that target, by 2030, it would need to be about 11% of overall electric vehicles. And then by 2030, to hit the state greenhouse gas reduction goals, we think there would have to be about 20%, 27% of overall vehicles to hit that 3 million vehicle target that I mentioned. Now, this is not a new area for NIPA. So as you know, trustees, we've been making investments in this area. We've also collaborated extensively with other state partners to bring about electric vehicle testing and transition. We've been working with the MTA and Con Ed on electric buses. We've also partnered with the New York State Thruway, and there was a recent announcement about installing new fast-charging stations at all Thruway service steps, stations between New York City and Buffalo as part of the governor's Charge New York 2.0 initiative. So this is really tremendously growing, an area that we've already been making some inroads in in the past. So it's not easy to try to drive this adoption. There are several barriers that we believe that we're in a good position to try to address. First is that there's not a tremendous amount of awareness at the public and potential buyers of electric vehicles about the benefits and the cost of electric vehicles relative to gas vehicles. A survey indicated that about 60% of car buyers know very little about electric vehicles. And so part of what we do here has to be working with other private sector and public sector partners to address that information gap. The second big area of barriers is that highway charging infrastructure and other charging infrastructure is perceived to be largely unavailable. So potential buyers have what's typically called range anxiety, that they're concerned that their battery in the car won't get them to the next charging station. So the fact that charging stations are not largely available and they are not largely visible to potential buyers, most buyers say that the lack of charging station is the biggest impediment to them buying an electric vehicle. This is kind of a chicken-and-egg problem, right? So car buyers don't buy cars, electric vehicles, because the charging infrastructure isn't there, and the private sector's not investing in charging infrastructure because the vehicle adoption's not there. So this chicken-and-egg problem is something we have to break through if we're really going to attack this problem. And then the final area is in regulations. And as I said, the PSC is working in this area as well. We need regulations that provide incentives to EV owners to use electric vehicle charging stations, that make sure that we're incentivizing them to use those electric vehicles at a time and at a place where the strain on the grid is lessened, and we maximize the economic benefits to that. So regulations around this and figuring out how to provide the rules are still being developed. We think we can help inform that process, but today it's still maturing. So what NIPA is proposing to do is that we put in place a plan to invest over time, and we're not asking for this money today from you, but we are asking to essentially plan to invest and to set aside up to $250 million between now and 2025 to address these barriers and to really use some of NIPA's funds to induce private investment to come in earlier than they might otherwise come into this market. And we want to do that through primarily three ways. One is to address this information barrier by helping people understand what the benefits are of electric vehicles. We believe with dozens of new models about to come out from the automakers, that it's going to be much easier to make that case, both in terms of the initial cost and the lifetime cost to consumers. So a marketing effort has to occur there. That's not a ton of money, but is definitely a lot of work that we're going to have to do with other partners. Then we believe that we need to install a fast-charging infrastructure backup throughout the state, focusing primarily on highways, but also in city areas throughout the state, so that potential buyers of EVs can see that this infrastructure is available and break through this chicken-and-egg problem of infrastructure and charging stations versus EV adoption. And then the third area is that we want to support the Public Service Commission and DPS in looking at this new regulatory structure, provide them with some test cases and some input when they develop their regulations, so that we can make sure that the result keeps the cost down and keeps the grid as reliable as possible. And we want to do those three things by working with the private sector to try to, again, maybe drive down some of the uncertainty, drive down some of the risk of investing in this area, to attract private investors, not to replace private investors. We want to work with other public sector organizations like NYSERTA and the Department of Environmental Conservation. D E C, by the way, is administering the VW settlement funds in this area, which are going to be used for a different purpose, but a complementary purpose to the money that we're talking about allocating from NIPA. And again, try to de-risk the market, look at new business and pricing models to attract private sector capital. So we're going to focus on these five major areas for NIPA efforts. So first is building DCFC charging stations. These are charging stations that can go as high as 150 kilowatts per station, and that's going to really drive down the charging time for people that might be charging at highways. And our goal is to get charging times down into the 10-to-20-minute range, to get as much as 200-mile range into your car battery. We want to do that along all major highway corridors in the state, about every 30 miles or so. And then we want to put DCFC charging stations in various city hub areas, where people, perhaps in multifamily housing or who are passing through airports and other high-traffic areas, can stop and charge their vehicle and not have it take all day, but just take a few minutes, and really trying to drive that charging time closer to what people are used to with gasoline engines. We want to increase customer awareness, as I said, so there's a marketing and information effort that needs to occur. We also want to help incentivize the transition to electric buses throughout the state, working with transit agencies in various cities to help finance and incentivize the transition to electric buses, so that even within inner cities, that the benefits of electric vehicles can be felt by people who use the bus system. We want to work with various vehicle fleet owners, starting with the state and NIPA itself, to convert vehicle fleets for our state customers and for NIPA to electric vehicles, and see if there's any way that private companies can join in that transition as well. And then finally, I mentioned the supporting the regulatory process, so I won't repeat that. So that's the overall initiative, and we'll bring back to you at a future meeting a plan for exactly how we propose to spend the larger $250 million over the next several years. As we said, that's an amount that we think needs to be invested between now and 2025. In the short run, we're asking you for approval today of the first $40 million for three specific Phase 1 projects that we would try to do between now and the end of 2019. And the first is easy enough. That's the first tranche of DC fast charger stations throughout certain highway corridors in the state. This map shows where there are currently fast chargers today, and they're largely concentrated downstate. But even in those areas, there are some pockets where there needs to be additional investment in fast chargers. And as we go further upstate, there are huge gaps in the highway system where there is no fast chargers at all. And we want to focus on the major traffic corridors initially for about 200 DC fast charger plugs, essentially, at 150 kilowatts, to make much more visible to potential buyers what the fast-charging infrastructure is going to look like. The second area that we're proposing to look at is what we call EV model communities. And this is really focusing on this integrated effort of both infrastructure and marketing within a constrained geographic area, which might be a small city or a municipal utility territory, where we can combine a lot of these efforts in addressing this information gap and seeing what works and what doesn't work in helping drive EV adoption. And then the third area is charging hubs at the two major airports in New York City. And this is, again, looking at fast chargers at those airports to help companies and owners of vehicles, like ride-sharing networks, but also for private vehicles and for Port Authority vehicles, to use these hub charging stations and show how vehicle, electric vehicle adoption and usage of these high-traffic areas can be driven by having these hub stations easily available. The Port Authority is a key partner that we're bringing into that effort. So the first $40 million is what we're asking you for approval of today for these three areas. And this is the actual language that's in your item for approval. We're seeking for approval of an investment of $40 million in funds. This is part of an overall allocation or set aside, which we believe will be up to $250 million between now and '25. But the initial $40 million will be used to carry out those three projects I just mentioned, and our intent is to execute those between now and the end of 2019. So let me pause at that point and see if there is any questions and ask if the board would like to consider that item at this time.
Just clarify, we've obviously spent a lot of time over months dialoguing around all this, but just to clarify the math. So 40s, the initial tranche, if you will, of the 250 users, set aside, carve-out, any initial thinking offshore wind and storage, what those set aside or carve-out amounts would be, or what the aggregate is that you're considering?
We don't know what the numbers are going to be for offshore wind and storage, but onshore renewables, we believe, is also going to be well in excess of $200 million. That's largely, though, going to be in terms of providing loans of various kinds, and we'll talk more about that in July, to help drive down the cost. So it's financing that we would make to projects, but that could be well in excess of 200 million, somewhere north, well north of that, in fact, and we would get that investment back. So that onshore renewable solicitation's been going on for some time, and we've been offering financing into that, but have not yet closed any of those transactions. So we bring that back to you at next meeting.
Yeah, that's part of the large-scale renewables discussion that we've had over the last couple of meetings. In line with that, looking at the discussion today and that we've had over the last couple of months, and how you've managed to focus the areas or the initiatives that you're pursuing, all in line in trying to tackle the aggressive goals that's been set by the state. As you look at this 250 million broad target or large financial resource dedication over the next seven years, narrowing and focusing currently on the electric vehicle, this is, I assume, as you've looked at the capacity and capability of NIPA and how the role that you've been playing as an enabler or collaborator with other agencies and private participants, and that role could be both financial as well as the expertise and advisory role that you've played. And you see that these are the areas where we can make the largest impact, based on our current existing capacity and capability, and also addressing what are the challenges to this particular sector or market area.
Yes. And I should mention that while we're asking you for this investment, our intent is that if you do approve this item, that one of our first steps would be to go out and, through a formal solicitation, ask the private sector to come in and co-invest with us. Now, obviously, we understand the private sector hasn't done that to date in charging infrastructure in New York State, particularly DC fast chargers, because they're much more expensive per unit than the slow chargers are. So we may not see initially a tremendous amount of interest, but we want to go out and ask and say, is there a way that we can use our money together with your money to leverage this and do even more infrastructure with the combination of public and private funds? But what we're asking you for today is essentially to allocate that amount of public money to do it, whether or not the private sector comes in. We believe that over time, and this is part of the role we want to play, is that as we show that we have every intention of doing this, and as people start to buy electric vehicles, that the private sector money is going to come in in greater and greater numbers. So over time, we really believe that we can partner with the private sector effectively here, both in terms of investment and services that they can provide to us. So we'll be doing this solicitation very soon after this. So, we'll be doing this solicitation very soon after this meeting.
That's a critical element in reaching across all of these initiatives. No implication, we can move the needle all the way on our own. We're trying, by being first mover, by taking that initial risk, by facilitating and enabling to bring others to the table. I mean, that's the clear collaboration, cooperation.
That's right. I think, you know, it gives so much credibility for, for you, for us, to put a stake in the ground here and say that we're really using money to break through this logjam, and we're serious about it, and we think we're going to begin to get some serious interest as well over time.
Yeah. Collectively, we're looking at hundreds of millions of dollars across these three initiatives and others that will follow to really set that snowball rolling in the necessary direction.
Yes, I'm, I'm sure, you know, storage and offshore wind are going to be of similar scale. We don't have the numbers yet, but that, that the whole point of focusing on those areas are ones that are going to be impactful and are going to require a significant amount of capital.
Bob, I want to commend you and your team for bringing the, the board along in the processes of the past months on the initiatives, because the board involvement's very critical to the whole process, and they've done a good job in doing that, so.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the feedback you've given me over the, the months in, in shaping this appropriately.
Mr. Chairman, I wholeheartedly support this project. It is completely in alignment with the NIPA mission and mandate of increasing generation from renewables, but also decreasing greenhouse gases. The fact of the matter is, hydropower by itself is just not enough to meet the mandates. And the history of NIPA is a collaboration on energy projects involving these electric vehicles. And so, far from being a mission creep, this is exactly what we ought to be doing in terms of filling the gaps between the strategy and the implementation of the state's energy plan.
I couldn't agree more.
Totally agree, totally agree with it. You know, I think we're getting rid of the chicken and the egg by, by doing this. Commend you.
Yes. Certainly the intent.
It's an exciting time. I'm confident we'll all look back in three to five years, as this was another defining moment for us as an authority, more importantly, the state, in terms of making the real progress, and what was the impetus. So, would echo what all, all of us have been saying over the last six months or so. When there's a need, we've got to step up, we've got to step in, we've got to lean in. Applaud you, Gil, and the entire team for crafting a very exciting plan to do so, and look forward to monitoring and measuring outcomes as we go and being nimble in response to what's encountered, as well as changing, you know, market and other dynamics. So, that's when this organization's at its best. We lead with our intellectual capital. There's a lot that's talked about here in terms of financial, but I think where this organization has long distinguished itself is the talent and the intellect that's here to drive and affect change. So, excited to be a part of it and excited to see it start.
Well, we're, I'll certainly speak for staff here, and I know Gil has said this as well, that first of all, we've gotten tremendous input across NIPA's staff. We've got a great team that's been working on this. Particularly want to commend our strategy team that has just worked tirelessly on this, Doug McMahon and the rest of the, the strategy team for all the hard work they've done, John and Raj and Matt and others who've worked on the electric vehicle component. We've got some very talented people working on this, and I want to thank them as well. So, at this time, I'll-
I'm kind of going to be the first of many proud days and moments.
Well, we've got a lot to come back to you with, right? So, you know, just, just to point that out for the members of the public, we're, we're only asking for approval today for this first $40 million tranche of investment on EVs. We're going to come back to you with business plans on the, all three initiatives, for the larger initiative on EV, and also on the other two areas, flexibility and clean generation. That'll be at a future meeting, and as well as asking you for financial and headcount adjustments to the existing four-year plan. We'll also be able to report to you on the initial stages of the, the first tranche investment.
So, if there's any other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to approve the initial 40 million of the 250 million carve-out. Judge moved. Second, Dennis, any other questions? Otherwise, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So, kudos. Well done. Okay. Our only other item on the agenda today is a report out from Judge Nakandry, as chair of the Audit Committee, for which we had a brief meeting earlier this morning.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, the committee met this morning and received a report from Angela Gonzalez, the Senior Vice President of Internal Audit, and received an update on the 2018 audit plan for NIPA and canals. We reviewed a status report on open audits and Angela's 100-day plan. So, that's what our meeting involved.
Angela and the team are well settled into the new regime, and yeah, we're pleased with the progress that's being made. So, thanks very much, Judge. With that, unless there's any other matters to come before us today, our next meeting is a couple of months out, the end of July, I think literally July 31st is the formal date. And in between, everyone will have ample running start on summer and summer fun. So, I would otherwise ask for a motion to adjourn this session. Second, embedded in that as well, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, again. Kudos, Gil, Bob, and the entire team. We're excited to be a part of it. Have a great day, everyone. Enjoy the next couple of months. We'll see you the end of July. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.